Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee here on Tuesday, April 29, 2025, 6:30 PM in the middle high school library. If I could just have everybody please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get into the agenda really quick, I just want to welcome our newest school committee member Caroline Ellis. She won the election on Saturday. She replaces Danielle Grafton, who was no longer running. So, welcome Caroline. Looking forward to having you as part of the team.
Welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the first thing we have to do in our first meeting after elections is reorganize. So, that's what we're going to start with. So, before we start, I'll be looking for a motion to authorize the secretary, who is Heidi, to act as temporary chairperson for the purpose of opening nominations and completing the election for the position of school committee chair. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor of giving this over to Heidi for a little bit?
Aye.
Aye. All yours.
Thank you. This is quick and easy. I am looking for nominations for the chair of the school committee. Do I have any nominations?
I'll nominate Chris Coyle.
I'll second that.
All right. Are there any other nominations? No? Then by roll call vote, can we have everyone announce the nominee of choice? Chris?
Chris.
I go for Chris. Melanie?
Chris.
Pam?
Chris.
And Caroline?
Chris.
Congratulations on your first vote.
All right. Well, thank you, Heidi. So, going forward, in the same vein, I'll be looking for nominations for vice chair of the school committee. We'll go through the same process. I'm going to start off and nominate Melanie as vice chair.
I'll second the nomination.
Is there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, without any, close the nominations. So, roll call vote, I'm going to vote for Melanie. Heidi?
Melanie.
Melanie?
Melanie.
Pam?
Melanie.
Caroline?
Melanie.
Okay, Melanie, you're the new vice chair of the Abington School Committee. And lastly, so I'll look for nominations for secretary of the school committee, and then when we have them all, we can close that up. Anybody wants to nominate anybody?
I nominate Heidi.
I'll second that. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Like, she does better than anybody I've ever seen anyways. Okay, so without that, so I'll close the roll call, the nominations for secretary, and we'll move on. So, roll call vote for the person. I'll vote Heidi. Heidi?
Sure, Heidi.
Okay. Melanie?
Heidi.
Pam?
Heidi.
And Caroline?
Heidi.
All right, perfect. So, we're reset, we're reorganized as far as that goes. So, I don't, forgive me, I don't know. Danielle, is it, is the subcommittees in here or, which is on the front page? Okay. So, on the front page is a list of subcommittees. If, and there's liaisons, it goes on to the second page. So, the school councils, there's basically one of us for each school. I just want to state that the principals are aware that we all have jobs and that we may not be able to make it for whatever reason. We're not a voting member on the school council. We're there to kind of answer any questions, school committee related, or bring it back, find out the answer, and get it to them. So, just understand that if you get put on there and you can't make a meeting, as I can attest to, it's okay. They know everybody has jobs and things like that that they have to take care of. If you guys want to take a look at the subcommittees that are there, then the number is the number of people that are generally on it. And I'll look to put the list together. Let me know your choices. I generally wait till June. We'll finish out the year. Caroline, as needed on something, I could always bring you in to one of the, one of the, Danielle is no longer on for the time being, but usually kind of let it go through the school year and then redo it at that point. So, over the course of the next six weeks or so, you guys can just let me know. All right? All right, so now that that is all done, I'd like to welcome it up to hearing of visitors. If anybody that's here would like to address the committee about any matters, I just ask you to go to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing nobody, we'll move on. Reading and approval of the records. First off, we have our last regular meeting on March 25th. That will be looking for a motion to approve as is or as amended.
I'll make the motion.
I'll, okay.
I was going to say, I'll second.
All in favor of approving them? Aye.
Aye.
And the second set of minutes is from the April 7th meeting, which was when we met before the school committee, before the town meeting, and stayed in session through town meeting. So, those are pretty straightforward. If anyone wants to take a look, I'll just be looking for a motion to approve those as well.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Okay. We're just going to take this a little bit out of order. Thank you.
Yep.
I'd like to introduce to you tonight our new assistant principal at Beaver Brook Elementary School. Suzie Trahan has accepted the position of assistant principal at Beaver Brook effective July 1st, taking the place of Melanie Savicki. She's earned a bachelor's degree in social work and a master's degree in school counseling from Bridgewater State University, a certificate of advanced graduate studies in school leadership from American International College, and a graduate certificate in trauma and learning from Leslie University. Her career includes work for the collaborative for education with DYS, serving as a school counselor, and most recently as the curriculum data and assessment manager of school counseling for the New Bedford Public Schools. I'd like to welcome you to Abington and to Green Wave Nation. And if you'd like to...
Welcome, Suzie. Yeah, feel free.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much. I'm so grateful and thankful for the opportunity to join Abington and for the confidence that you have in me joining your team. I'm a big proponent in working with students and families and being engaged with the community, and I'm really looking forward to joining Abington in this next chapter in my career. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. We look forward to having you.
Thank you very much.
See you in July.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks to the committee that was on there too. Pam, thank you for volunteering to be on there. Mrs. Thompson, thank you. I know you probably led most of that. I'm not going to even... Dr. Bosta helped out, right? So, I'll go with that. So, thank you, everybody. So, moving right along, we're going to go to a presentation for the guidance department. So, Ms. Christina Park is going to present.
Hi, everyone. I am Christina Park, the director of guidance at Abington High School. Just a refresher for those of you who are new, at the high school, we have three guidance counselors, and we split students up by their last name, and we focus on social emotional needs, academic counseling, career and college planning, and new student registrations. This is our guidance curriculum. We meet with each grade level in groups. So, for grade nine, we focus on graduation requirements, GPA, academic eligibility, attendance policy, the importance of getting involved in clubs and activities. This year, we had four seniors come down and talk to freshmen, just explaining things that they wish they knew then that they know now. That seemed to be a big hit, because I feel like they pay attention more to the seniors than they do to us sometimes. So, we enjoyed having them have their input. Grade 10, we do the introduction to Naviance, which is a college and career platform that we use for sophomores. We did a career interest inventory where they were able to do a survey. They looked at strengths, weaknesses, interests, and then after the survey completed, a list of careers was generated, and they were able to match careers with potential college majors, and then match those college majors to schools that they could potentially attend. Grade 11, we continue the post-secondary planning process. We mostly focus heavily on the college application process and the college features of Naviance in grade 11. We meet with juniors twice. We met with them back in February, and we're going to meet them again in June, just to give them a refresher on what they should be doing going into the summer. And in September, we hit the ball running with the college application process with seniors, where we create the Common App and review Naviance's features, do two workshops a week during Bridge Block, just to help them get ready for the college application process. We host events every year. These are a variety of our events. New this year, we were excited to offer Massa Soya Community College do an on-the-spot information session in Portuguese. So, a large number of our Portuguese students attended that, and they were able to meet with admissions counselor one-on-one and be offered admission to Massa Soya Community College, which was really great. So, I'm glad that we're able to do that. I hope to continue to do that in the following years. We also have Massa Soya come in to do a general on-the-spot admissions with all of our students, which is always a big turnout. We had about 25 students that applied to Massa Soya this year, which is great because community colleges is free for the majority of people. So, it is definitely an affordable option for our students and families. Progress on areas of growth as presented in 2023, 2024. We always want to increase students' knowledge of the variety of post-secondary options available to them. We usually have Bridgewater State and Stonehill and Massa Soya come in every year, just because they are local. A lot of our students apply to them, so we want them to get all the information that they need. We also have Southeastern Technical Institute come in every year to talk about the trades that they offer. Military branches come in during lunch all the time. New this year, again, was the Massa Soya on-the-spot in Portuguese. We had La Salle come in, Mass Maritime, Mass College of Pharmacy, Curry, and Norwich University, and AHS alumni came back and shared his experience with our students, which was really great. So, I think this year was our biggest year yet in terms of having colleges come in and speak to our students, which was really nice. In terms of continuing to be educated in local mental health resources, we try to get outside agencies to come in during our professional development days to talk to us about the resources available to help our students. This year, we had Pembroke Hospital come in to discuss their partial program, partial hospitalization program, and BAMZ Health Agency, which was more focused on drug and alcohol use. Also, in terms of researching resources and programs that other school districts use to help students transition back into the building after an extended absence, we visited a couple of schools, Stoughton Middle School, Bridgewater Rainham. We researched nine other areas, schools in the area that have these types of transition programs. These programs are really great in terms of how we would make it work in Abington. We're still trying to think of creative ways to do that, pending on resources that we have. But we do work with our school adjustment counselor, our school psychologist, very closely in terms of helping these students transition back into school after an extended absence. Areas of growth for the future, we're always going to want to continue our student knowledge for post-secondary options and be more educated on the mental health resources available to our students. And then another big push that we're hoping to see is more class options for dual enrollment, which I'm going to address in a couple of slides. Our partnerships that we work closely with, Mass Hire offers a lot of career exploration for our students. We go on three field trips typically. We did a STEM career field trip at Bridgewater State, a career day conference, which covered a wide range of careers such as law enforcement, hospitality, healthcare, et cetera. And then we have a construction day coming up in May where we go to Massa Soya. It's a very hands-on field trip. Students get to go on the machines, touch the tools, talk to a lot of the union members there. It's a really great experience for our kids. Additionally, through our field trip, the STEM career field trip, Mr. Foley brought those kids to the STEM career field trip, and he was able to bring a group of students back to do a cybersecurity field trip. So, they checked out their cybersecurity lab. They really, really enjoyed that. It was a really great experience. So, we had 25 students go view Bridgewater State's cyber, new cybersecurity program, which was a good hit. As I mentioned, Quincy College dual enrollment, we will be piloting environmental science and psychology for the upcoming year. We had spoke to Quincy about doing more courses. We wanted to see if our Holocaust course would go, or our horror and film class, and then I think we looked at some foreign language classes, but they just weren't matching in terms of curriculum. So, they are pretty strict in terms of matching what we have for our curriculum and what they have for their curriculum. So, we're going to continue to push more classes, but these are the ones that we are going to pilot for next year, and we're really hopeful that we'll get a good turnout with our students. Other important partnerships is our local community organization. So, Have a Sammy Kind of Day Foundation. That was created by Nancy McDonough on behalf of her daughter Sammy Theodore, who tragically passed away shortly after she graduated from Abington High School. The mission of this organization is to make people smile, and they have supplied numerous things for our students over the past few years. Just recently, they helped 15 of our juniors with their prom needs, which was great. They've sent students on trips to Europe. They gave a laptop out last year. So, they're just a really great organization. I'm going to be meeting with Nancy next week to just talk about more ideas of how we can help Abington kids out. I was asked to speak a little bit more about the dual enrollment and just kind of explain a little bit of what it's like. So, the dual enrollment, it's different than your traditional dual enrollment, where the students will be at Abington High School, being taught by Abington teachers. Typically, our students would go off to like Massa Soya campus and be taught by Massa Soya professors. This is more convenient for our students. We didn't have a lot of students going off campus. It conflicted with extracurricular activities after school. So, we are hoping that more students will get involved and do this dual enrollment through Quincy College. It is a huge cost saver for them in the long run when they go to college. As you can see here, a four-year university, you can expect to pay $400 per one credit. Usually, a course at a college is three credits, and that's about $1,200. At Abington High School, through Quincy College dual enrollment, students will be paying between $350 to $450 approximately. With the environmental science, that has a lab component, so that will be on the more expensive side with the $450. But again, saving so much money by doing it this way. Another thing that we are hoping we will see a change in is I feel like it's going to help our students be more marketable with their college applications. One of the questions on the Common App does ask, have you taken a college/university course? And a lot of our students say no. So, I feel like with having this option, a lot of our, more of our students will say yes, and maybe give them a bump up with their applications. These are just a sample of the list of colleges that accept dual enrollment credits through Quincy College. I just pulled these because the majority of them are schools that our students typically apply to. And then I pulled some others that are really selective that I thought was important to share. So, for example, UMass Amherst is, UMass Amherst and Bridgewater, I would say, are our top schools that our students apply to. But I was happy to see that schools like Villanova, UNC, UVM all accept these credits. So, there's a full list on Quincy College's website of the colleges. I don't think, I think there's probably more colleges on that list already, just based on the number of schools that have partnered with Quincy College. So, we're excited for this opportunity. In terms of the vision of the graduate, we, as a department, usually focus primarily on the social competent contributor and the self-aware individual. Just examples of that, we help students navigate social situations by facilitating mediations between students. We use technology to enhance learning with the Naviance program. In terms of the self-aware individual, we help prioritize and manage students' time when they come back from an extended absence and organize their list of assignments for when they return. And then we help students take intellectual risks when they're doing their course selection process, which we just recently finished. We did the middle school last, and that was like the first week, I think, in March. But we talked to them about increasing their rigor if they're ready for it, making sure that their schedule is well-balanced, et cetera. I believe that's all I have. Questions?
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Park?
I do, just one. So, with course selection, we hear a lot at the high school that students struggle with course selection because things conflict. Is there any data gathering done when a student is maybe a freshman or sophomore for what do you think you're going to want to get into your four years, so that we can plan how many sessions of each class we have? Or maybe with the changing demographics of each grade, like, oh, this grade is really into geography and history, or something like that?
We definitely have those individual conversations. There's no official, like, data spreadsheet.
Like a survey, or?
No, not necessarily like that. And it just changes every year, and it also depends on staffing and availability, too, in terms of what we offer. And we share staff with the middle school, so that also causes a lot of the conflicts. So, some courses, I know that, like, band and music always have to be one period, and our band and music kids always are, generally, a lot of them are in a lot of our AP classes, which also only run one period because it's based on the student's request. So, there's a lot of reasons why those conflicts happen, and we try our best to make it work. We also offer students to do virtual high school, which is like if a student can't fit a particular class into their schedule, we can look at our virtual high school catalog, and they could take it online if they choose to do that.
Does that, does virtual high school have to happen during the school year, or do they have an option through Abington Public to take it between, say, their junior and senior year?
Like, over the summer?
Over the summer, yeah.
There is a cost difference between the summer courses. So, right now, we only offer it during the school year, but it's something to explore.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I have two questions, and one of them has to do with that, the Massa Soya, the summer programs.
The dual enrollment?
The dual enrollment.
Sure.
So, I know that your breakdown was colleges that were accepting, say, Quincy College. Does that work pretty much the same way for Massa Soya?
Very similar as Massa Soya, yes. And students can take the Massa Soya over the summer at Massa Soya.
Right.
Yes.
Particularly session two?
Particularly, yes. Yes, so it all, it all works out. Session two usually starts early July. Session one usually starts, like, beginning or mid-May and goes to, I'd say, around July 4th.
Okay. And one of the things, this is just me calling you out, on the fact that you have individual counseling on these things, post-secondary planning, even scholarships, which is a job in and of itself. And we see what you are trying to do, not just for the future, current and future academic needs, but also emotional needs. It's a lot.
Thank you, Heidi.
So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Quick question. In regards to the dual enrollment, is there a certain grade that the students need to achieve in order to get the credits, regardless if they pay or not?
Good question. It's a C. Quincy College requires a C, so we're saying that's a 75 in order to get the credit. Students don't have to pay until May, so they'll know by, like, early May if they're going to get that grade, and they can choose not to do the Quincy College dual enrollment for the payment.
Oh, wow.
And we're only offering it to juniors and seniors. We're not doing sophomores yet or freshmen, just because we're trialing it out. We want to make sure that it's a good fit.
Perfect. And then, I just...
No, you can... Sorry.
Oh, I was going to change the subject.
Can I ask another question on dual enrollment?
Sure.
So, psychology, for example, all the students in the psychology class aren't necessarily anticipating doing dual enrollment?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yep, no, they don't have to. They can choose whether or not they're going to take the class, and then they can choose if they want it for dual enrollment credit.
Oh, that helps, because I thought it was like a dual enrollment.
I did too. I did too.
So, okay.
It makes it easier. It's more flexible.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And I also have questions about dual enrollment while we're on that. Did you say it's taught by staff here, or?
Abington High School teachers. So, they're, they have their, like, we send Abington High School's curriculum to Quincy College. Quincy College reviews it, makes sure it aligns very closely to what they have, and then that's, that's the agreement.
Okay. And my other question is, like, if a student is trying to decide between dual enrollment versus taking an AP class, because some of the classes you mentioned, I know are offered at the AP level. Like, how do students decide? Are there pros and cons? Are students more likely to be steered toward one than the other?
There are pros and cons. There's a price difference for sure, but there's also, I feel like, a more guarantee with the dual enrollment in terms of getting credit, because you need that, you only need that 75, that C. Whereas with an AP class, a lot of colleges are looking for a score of a four or five.
Okay.
And it's just based on that one exam. So, if a student's having a bad day on that exam, that could just totally take that option off their table.
Okay. Well, and also, different colleges are starting to move the goalposts a little bit as to what they're actually accepting, even with fives. There are colleges who are no longer taking those for college credit, so...
I want to circle back to the social emotional piece. So, you were talking about being educated on the local mental health resources that are available for students. Are those accessible to the parents as well?
We can give resources to parents if they reach out, absolutely. We do have a list of therapists that we just updated this past summer. So, we have providers. We used to have CareSalus, which was open to students and families, but we no longer, unfortunately, have that, which is why we wanted to revamp our list to make sure that everything was up to date. But we can certainly provide resources to families as well.
Okay. And I don't know if you know this, but is it, like, is there anything available for, like, mass health in those, or is it all, like, pay?
So, a lot of them are insurance-based. I know that a lot of websites that we use, for example, Psychology Today, you can filter out what insurance that you have if you're looking to find, like, a therapist. You can find, based on your need, insurance, location, virtual, in-person. There's like a big search engine that we often refer families to to help with that. It all, it all does depend on insurance, though.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Park, I just had one. It's kind of, it's kind of bouncing off of the mental health resource, and it's more just looking into, like, collaboration, I think, here. Is that, so when you, when you're working with educating the kids and getting the kids what they need for the local mental, is that something you look to partner with, like, Ms. Daisy and the Health and Wellness Department as well here?
So, we do do, we do partner with Ms. Daisy frequently. We do the signs of suicide program with her every year with our freshmen. Guidance counselors go in on the first day when the students are reviewing the signs of suicide videos. There's three vignettes that they watch, and we contribute to the conversation back and forth, answer the questions. And then day two, the school psychologist and school adjustment counselor go in, and they do a resiliency lesson with the students. So, we definitely do collaborate with them.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was the... Thank you very much, Ms. Park. I appreciate the time. Up next, Ms. Christina Wilson, the head of the Foreign Language Department.
Hi, everyone. Christina Wilson, head of the Foreign Language Department. Thank you for having me. I couldn't find a funny meme like I've done the last two years. Unfortunately, I maybe spent too much time looking for one, but this is what we've got. I thought it was a great image. A prior in Spanish, you don't read a textbook about swimming and suddenly know how to swim. You get in the water and practice, but with support. And I thought that was a great analogy for how you learn language. You do kind of just jump in, but you need scaffolding and support, and that is what we do as teachers, and especially as we've kind of transitioned more towards proficiency. So, some updates since I presented last year. We've created an instructional vision for the department that gears more towards proficiency-based teaching and learning, and aligns more with, like, our new state standards that rolled out a couple of years ago. We evaluated our current scope and sequence and redesigning our curriculum from the bottom up. So, we started with summer curriculum work last summer and have worked this year to redesign all the Spanish one curriculum to align across both the middle school and the high school. With that, we decided on four thematic units for Spanish one and created a common list of vocab for each one that'll be the same across the Spanish one, both, again, middle school and high school. Our textbook license expires at the end of this year. We are adopting Adios textbook for the next year. It is an online resource. It is not driving our curriculum. The teachers are driving the curriculum, so we have agency over what we are, the topics we're going to discuss, and we're really creating it from scratch, kind of pulling from a variety of resources. Adios is one of them. Moving forward, we're offering AP Spanish next year for the first time, I believe, in a long time. Someone would have to check me on that. We currently have 19 students signed up for it, so we're very excited for that. We are working this year, and will finish next year, working on common end-of-unit assessments for Spanish one for the end of those units. We started it this year, and again, we'll finish before school starts. At least, that's the goal. And then we'll start redesigning Spanish two to kind of do the rollout of the curriculum as we progress up. That work will probably start at the end of this year, maybe in the summer. Stamp data, which I'm very excited to present on. You can see the scores I've left up here from previous years. We had 67 tests taken this spring, a couple of weeks ago, in only four different languages, but we did have 20 students qualify for the CO. So, we're very excited about that. There are some students who have qualified in more than one language, which is also very exciting. So, yeah. So, here's a breakdown on the next slide of what it looks like compared to last year. And there's a ton of growth, as you can see, in all four domains. So, pretty, we're all pretty excited about that. Pretty proud of all the work the department has done, grade seven and up. That's all I have. I kept it really short and sweet here. So, are there any questions?
I just, more, more of a comment, I'm sorry.
Sure.
More of a comment. I don't know. So, reading, writing, listening, and speaking, when I'm trying to think back to when I took Spanish, writing and speaking were the most difficult. So, to see that that's the most growth, great job, great job by you and the department. I think that's really all I was going to get. I... I, it's great to see that all the scores increasing. Is there anything you think you can attribute it to, or just?
I think there's probably a couple of things. I think you're right, writing and speaking, those are the output. That's where the student has to produce. Those are, like, the harder ones. So it is awesome to see the growth. We did, all as a department, do the Avant Advanced Training last year to have a better understanding of the proficiency levels, what's expected at each level. So I think that has helped. And I think just kind of our shift towards proficiency is also helping. The teachers have worked really hard. I'm very proud of all the work they've done from the ground up. So it's been a joint effort, and I was very excited to see this before the vacation.
I believe you talked about it last year.
Yeah.
For those on the committee and myself, who maybe don't remember, can you talk about what you mean by the switch to proficiency?
Switch to proficiency is, um, yes, I can.
High level, high level.
High level. Just being able to show what the students can do with the language and having them be able to take more risks, less of a focus on, like, fill-in-the-blank grammar, which is maybe if you took a language class, that's how you learned it. But thinking more about what you can do, what you understand, how you can apply it. The perfection and the accuracy comes the more that you practice it. Think about how you learned a language. We made mistakes, but we could still communicate. So it's really based on communication, and that's really the goal. And I think we kind of see that with some of these scores, or just like pushing the kids to, like, say it, write it, do it, get your message across, and the scores are going up. Good luck, thanks.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Because I'm not familiar with this. Do you have any other languages that are offered besides Spanish?
At this time, we do not. We only offer Spanish.
Okay. And then was there any thought of Portuguese? Because there's so many kids taking the Portuguese test. Just curious.
There has been conversations about it. I don't know that it's in the plan in the near future.
Fair enough.
Yes.
Of course.
Yeah, I do too, so.
Do you have any numbers, and if you don't today, that's fine, on how many seniors are taking language? I get the sense that maybe it's becoming more common for students to take language all four years. Is that true in Abington?
We're getting there. I mean, we see a shift next year. I know we didn't run our upper-level course, Spanish five, this year. The numbers were low. And there was the issue you were talking with Christina Park about, the conflict. You know, they have to make a choice when there's one section offered versus another class. But we do have more seniors who took Spanish four this year, if that was, like, in their, their path. And, I mean, the fact that we're gonna offer AP next year and have students, nineteen students interested in taking it, I think does speak to the fact that they are wanting to take it for all four years.
That's great.
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you.
Two things. The first one, stamp testing. As I understand it, there had been stamp testing at the eighth-grade level.
Correct.
As kind of an entry level, and that has since been eliminated. Could you?
We had some conversations about that, and we kind of, we weren't really doing much with the data, to be honest. We were testing and then, and testing for the sake of testing. So we've decided to move it to Spanish two, since that is kind of, that is the graduation requirement, two years. So it would kind of be Spanish two or three, depending on, again, where the students entered the program. We're thinking that might give us a little better idea where students are with their language abilities to kind of guide the direction of the program.
Okay.
Does that, I don't know if that answers your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, so, having some knowledge of the stamp testing, the speaking portion, back to 2024, I know there was a lot of discussion about the fact that, especially the core group of students who would like to have gone on to continue Spanish this year, but because of those scheduling conflicts. I'm just wondering, have you ever considered introducing a bridge block, something, a conversational time where some of those students who might not have the ability to continue a full-scale testing, but might still be interested in having the access to speak to other students in the language? It's more interesting than Duolingo, probably. Has that ever been considered?
That has never been considered, but I think it would be an awesome option for students. I mean, I would love it. You're talking students who, like, maybe didn't, wanted to take the fourth year and were not unable to for their schedule. Yeah. I think that would be great.
Well, I know that there were some students who were just shy of being able to get the seal of biliteracy, but they didn't take language this year. They didn't have the opportunity to retest. Or they just knew that they weren't going to have the practice behind them to be able to get there, because they were focusing on other classes. So maybe just if we could find creative ways to continue the speaking opportunities, maybe outside of just the regular classroom, I, might be something worth pursuing.
I think that's a great idea. We do have, there is an option for if students need to earn a six to get, earn the seal on each of the four components. If they get a five on one and six on, or six or higher on the others, they can retake that one section. So we do have four students who are eligible for a retake this year. But you're right, if they're not going on, or maybe they've retook it and still didn't do it, but they're only a junior, I think that would be a great option to explore.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Can I add one more clarifying?
Sure.
This accounting brain is just realizing this. They take potentially six years of Spanish, but you said Spanish five. Do they, is Spanish one both seventh and eighth grade?
Correct. So Spanish one is split up between the two years. It's one A and one B.
Okay.
Yep.
That was my question. How does it work? What's the levels of how it works?
That's what I was trying to say. Depending on their entry point, a lot, the majority of the students are coming in at Spanish two as freshmen. But we do have some sections of Spanish one at the high school. So it really depends on what path they're on.
Ms. Wilson, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having me. Appreciate your unending support.
So up next, we have the Abington Early Education Program School Improvement Plan, gonna be presented by the Director of the AEP, Annie Robinson.
Good evening, everybody. I am Annie Robinson, the Director of the Abington Early Education Program, and I'm happy to be here tonight to review the progress we have made on our school improvement plan this year and also present to you our goals that we are proposing for next year. I always like to start by acknowledging and thanking the members of our school council, our parent representatives, our Ms. Ashley Maderos and Mr. John Brace. Our staff members are Ms. Casey Griggs, one of our teachers, and Ms. Susan Keaty, our speech therapist. And Pam Yelly is our school committee representative. For our 2024-2025 School Improvement Plan, we had four goals that were targeting each of the district's strategic objectives. And I'm just gonna briefly review the progress that we've made on those goals to this point. Our first goal was in the area of teaching and learning, and it continued to address our ongoing work in the development of our curriculum, improving the quality and the consistency of the material that's being presented to our students at the AEP. And we've really made some great progress on this goal. Much of our professional development time this year was dedicated to continuing our rating of our thematic curriculum. We are through, I believe, Unit Five, which brings us to about two-thirds of the way through a school year, that we have that content developed, which is great. All of our classroom teachers have been provided with digital materials, so increased use of technology to support the use of the Learning Without Tears curriculum. Our teachers have all aligned with each other and are on a similar pacing and presentation of the other curriculum that we use, including our Hegarty, our lively letters, and our second-step social-emotional curriculum. Additionally, we've added common planning time for teachers, and this is something that we have done somewhat sporadically in the past. But this year, we have dedicated a monthly period for both our teachers, one, one session for our teachers to get together to, to plan and talk about the thematic curriculum. And then another time during the month that the teachers and their classroom teams are able to join together. So the classroom teacher, their related service providers, and when possible, our paraprofessionals are able to join in that as well. The final thing that really has been a wonderful addition and a big supporting our progress on this goal is our partnering with our technology specialist. She's spent a lot of time with us at AEP. She's just been such a great resource for us. She provides, she's provided direct instruction to our teachers on how to access the technologies. Sometimes we kind of get these materials, and we think they're great, and we know what we're doing. And then we kind of are, you know, at a loss when it's, when they're in their classrooms and trying to access specific things. So that's been a wonderful addition. Along with that, she has also helped our teachers create specific materials for their classrooms. So attendance, attendance boards that they are, interactive boards that they're able to do with their touchscreens. She's really worked very hard to create our listening centers. We have a very large listening center library now, complete with some enrichment materials to go along with the different books that have been represented. Our second goal was in the area of communication and really working to focus on improving that homeschool communication. This is always a priority for us. This year, our school council survey was related to asking teachers how they communicate with families. What modes do they use? What's their frequency of communication? What kind of information do they get back from families? And it was interesting for us to go through that information, and it kind of gave us a really good starting point for thinking, how do we want to make this more consistent across all of our classrooms? Our teachers develop monthly family newsletters. So each of the classrooms, instead of, instead of sending out individual curriculum-related newsletters, they're sending out a monthly newsletter from all of the teachers. And it's really specifically related to our curriculum, what we're teaching our children, and includes information related to the curriculum content and also some extension activities that they can do at home. And then along with that, we continued with our ongoing communications with our preschool press, our Facebook page, and our increased availability for families to access if they wanted to come in and meet with teachers or any staff member. Our third goal was in the area of culture and inclusion, and it focuses on strengthening the AEP community as a whole. One of the things we did this year was we have held, we, our goal is to hold quarterly events. We've held three family events so far, all related to curriculum. So they're, they're all curriculum-related events. In the fall, we, we do a harvest, and it's related to our, we do our pumpkin patch, and it's related to our harvest theme. We did a holiday celebration around the Christmas holidays. We just completed a growing and learning where families came in and were able to participate in a planting activity with their children, as well as pulling in different aspects of other curriculums, such as our Learning Without Tears. We've implemented some fundraising events this year. We did the, the street sign fundraiser, which was a huge success. And we have a raffle that is planned for this coming month, for the month of May. We have, one of the things that I know I've talked about the last couple of times that I've been up here is around our volunteers and how to engage families and how to engage parents or caregivers coming in to volunteer. What we did this year is we identified our monthly Play-Doh makers, and families were able to sign up to be a family that makes the Play-Doh for a classroom for, for the month. And that's been a nice thing, a nice addition. Our fourth goal was in the area of district operations, and it really was around, again, always monitoring and looking to improve our safety and also thinking about our expanded use of, of the environment here at 201. Safety, we continue. We've actually had a wonderful year in terms of our, our feelings of how we're doing with our safety in our parking lot and our arrival and dismissal procedures. We had a little bit of a blip the, the week or two before April vacation. Seemed to be, families started to kind of be parking all over the place and walking kids from all different directions to the door. So we've kind of circled back with families about that. But that's been in, an area that we've really seen significant improvement. In terms of expanding the use of the environment, we have, we have implemented weekly hallway gross motor groups for every classroom. And that's using just our, the actual hallway, using that as learning space within our building, and then also translating some of those activities over to the gymnasium in the high school and middle school, which we tend to use during the colder months when we can't get out for recess. We purchased additional playground equipment to expand those gross motor challenges for the students, both on the playground and in the gymnasiums and in the hallway motor groups. And then we have also, we are finally able to identify an area where the students could use their tricycles, and this has been a huge hit. Everyone is very happy with that. The kids love it, and they're all excited to see the sunshine and the warm weather come back so we can get those going again. For the coming school year, so for twenty-five, 2025, 2026, we are proposing two goals that we'd like to address. The first one is in the area of teaching and learning, and that, again, is going to be to continue with our, developing our curriculum. We fully expect that we will complete that in the coming school year, excuse me, and also start to be kind of doing a little circle back. Now, we've had some units that we've been able to implement. We'll be doing some kind of, like, going back, let's think about other things we want to edit, things that we want to change. So we will be continuing to coordinate with our technology specialist. And then we will also be really looking to expand our literacy opportunities for our students, so increasing the, the, their opportunities in terms of accessing books, how books are accessed, how we use our books in our classrooms, and including extension activities related to our, to our literacy. And then our, our second goal is focusing, is really focuses both on communication and the culture and inclusion objectives. And it relates to continuing to strengthen the AEP community, always looking to increase family engagement and consistent communication across the school year. We will look to continue with our thematic news, unit newsletters, really focusing on activities for extension to home. We would like to add a fifth family event. So we were kind of thinking, at least every other month, we would be having an event that our families can participate in. Expanding our intern program. This is such a popular program, and we, we partner with the high school, we partner with the middle school. We have students in the middle school that are peer leaders that come down. We have students in the anti-bullying club that come down. And we'd really like to be able to offer that to any student that wants to participate and be a part of AEP and have that experience. So we want to make sure that we're, we're kind of expanding that reach to our middle and high school students. And then looking to increase the use of the field, again, looking for varied motor experiences. That's the one area that we, I wouldn't say that we struggle, but it's one area that we would always like to be improving on. And then finally, we will be looking to survey families on needs related to curriculum and engagement opportunities. And that's it. Are there any questions that I can answer for anyone? Or does anyone have any comments related to the preschool?
I have a couple, too.
All right. I'll go first.
Sure.
Ms. Robinson. So I guess, first of all, I'm really glad to hear about the ability to use the gym during the winter months. I know that was like a big, it's, it can be tough, right, at different times. And I'm glad to hear that, that that time is, is being allowed. I think you answered one of them. I was gonna ask about the intern program, if it was, if you, like, deemed it to be successful, and it sounds like you do. I think that's, that was part of the idea of this, of that, of the, of the pre-K program being in this building. I had, so, one was, is, what, what's the percentage or number, whatever, like, of the amount that, I'm gonna get this term wrong, I always get this term wrong. But you have the peers, and then you have, I'm gonna say, those that are required to be educated by, just like, what's, what split do you have for that right now? Like, of how many?
So our program is, right now, this year, so i- in general, our classrooms can have up to eight students that are community peers, so those are tuition-paying students. And then we can have up to seven students in a classroom, in our integrated classrooms, that are students that receive some level of special education support.
Okay.
We are full for our community peers. This year, we've been full. We were already, we filled up in the beginning of, I would say, the middle of March. We filled our final spot for next year for community peers, which really is wonderful. A lot of our neighboring districts really struggle with that, so that's a great thing. And we will, we can't go beyond those numbers.
Okay.
So those are the parameters that we.
So you led into my next question. Because I thought I saw that it was full somewhere. We increased tuition, correct? So that didn't seem to take anything away.
Did not impact at all.
So that's good to know.
We have about twenty-five people, uh, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two people on our waiting list.
All right, well, great, thank you. That kind of, uh, covers my question, so.
Which is funny, because that, both of those things, so that was my question. Number one was, did you have any pushback or anything like that? And number two, I've actually seen the. And number two, I've actually seen the, the intern programs in action, just by nature of what I do for my job, being in the room when the, not just the middle school peer leaders were in there, but also some of the high school interns as well. These classrooms are the most joyous, dynamic, fantastic little, just rooms of engaged learning. And I don't even know how else to explain it. When I get there, I don't want to leave, I really don't. And just watching how much care and support and love that, that students and the teachers and the interns have for each other. It really is pretty remarkable. So thank you for opening the doors to the students who want to come down and experience it, to the high school students, the middle school students. But really, thank your staff for making great things happen in that building all the time.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that, thank you very much. And I appreciate our partnership with both the middle school and the high school. They really, I mean, that really is what makes it work.
I was just going to say thank you to the staff, because they do a remarkable job, so.
And have for years, I can speak to.
Exactly.
My son, starting at the center school and three years old, so, who's a freshman now, so.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you.
Up next for the middle school school improvement is Principal Mr. Matthew McCurton.
Before I start, I'd also thank any, my kids that go down to the pre-K to take part in that internship program. They come into the office and they drop off their bags, and it's the most exciting I see them. When they come back, I ask them who got hit, punched, or bit, and it's usually no one. So that's the best. They absolutely love it, so. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present the 2025-26 School Improvement Plan for the middle school. I want to start by thanking the council membership. For teachers, we have Mr. Boudreaux and Mrs. Higgins. For parents, Mrs. Peavy and Mrs. Ellis. And I'd like to stop for a moment and just congratulate you, Caroline, on your election to school committee. We continue to lose school council members to school committee. So if any of you are looking for your future political opponents, I will fill you in on who is serving on the council next year. Assistant Principal Jessica Sullivan was also part of the council and our school committee liaison, Mr. Coyle. I'm going to go through some recent highlights as part of the plan that you have in your packet. I'm not going to read through all of them, but there are a few that I'd like to point out in a little more detail. We did implement our new report card for grade five through eight this year. That went very well. It was a very smooth implementation from the teachers being able to access and use everything appropriately and correctly, to the report card itself going out. We didn't really receive negative or critical feedback. We're certainly open to that, but I believe it was accepted by the community, so we're very happy about that. We'll be continuing to work with that this year. We're focused on increasing our comment bank to make it more robust and have it be what the teachers want them to say. We continue to develop our PBIS system. Common expectations were posted and taught during advisory in all, all areas of the building. And we did implement a reward system where students can earn these little tokens that are printed out of paper called WaveWows. And you never know if those are going to catch on and kids are going to buy into it. So I have a couple data points that show, I think, that that is happening. Over the course of this school year, and these were implemented starting early October, so from early October to now, 4,778 of those tokens have been redeemed. I can break it down by grade level and understand that this typically is higher at the younger grades. 1,552, grade five. 1,416, grade six. 919, grade seven. And 921, grade eight, tickets were redeemed. That's almost eight per student at the middle level. What they're redeeming them for is anything from little trinkets and fidget toys, but with the more popular thing are privileges, mostly focused around lunchtime. So the privileges at lunch, lunch at the high top tables outside of the library here is the most desirable one for our students. Mrs. London sets up tablecloths and little invitations, and they really feel special while they're up here, which is, it's just great to see. Also lunch with the school resource officer, and more recently lunch outside in the nice weather. And we have several staff members who volunteer to step out of their lunch duty in the cafeteria to go outside and supervise that, which I'm thankful for. That's a sacrifice on their end. And also gym time with friends, so they can choose to bring some friends down to the gym during an advisory period for that. Privileges, and these things are earned just by redeeming those tokens. They're colored by grade level, so we can track this. And the grades earn grade-wide items as their token count goes up. So it's been a real good program for us. We did complete our advisory curriculum. We have four years' worth of advisory curriculum, complete with lessons that are implemented throughout the year during advisory period, focused on executive function and SEL skills. I'm going to mention boost tutoring here a little bit. Boost tutoring is held after school, so it's not tied to our advisory program. There's sometimes a misconception with what that program is. What it is not is a teacher at the front of the room running through a math lesson. That does happen when the students require that. But what boost is really built on is executive function and relationship building with staff. It's very similar to what happens to our, during our advisory program, but it's a second dose for some of those students who need a little bit more of it. It's offered free after school, and we're very happy to continue to be able to offer that this year. The last thing I'm going to bring up is something that is in the recent highlights, even though it hasn't happened yet, but it's happening tomorrow. And that's Vive18 is coming in. Abington Copes is sponsoring Vive18 to come in. What that program is, is a sober lifestyle choice program. Pam, please, I know you said you didn't want to jump in, but jump in and correct me anytime. It's expensive, so we're very happy that Copes is bringing it in. The difference between this programming and other programs that we've had in the past is there's a commitment by Vive18 to help grow this in our community with our students. So what their goal is, is to have some sort of an after-school group program or club where students are continuing to live and spread the message of a sober lifestyle. And Copes is already committed to bringing this program back in the fall to reinforce that and to continue that next year. So we'll close the year sort of with it this year, but have it open the year next year, which I think is a perfect thing for, for our kids. They'll be seeing our seventh and eighth graders tomorrow, as well as 10th graders at the high school. Good, thank you. So moving into the current, our school improvement plan for next year. We also have two goals, both aligned to the strategic plan objectives and initiatives. Goal one is to increase student achievement through enhancements to curriculum instruction and assessment. Within that goal, we're going to continue our use of iReady, Common Assessments, and MCAS to develop grade level and department goals. We'd like to develop a vertical curriculum alignment team. This is directly related to Strategic Plan Initiative 1.3. What that team will be doing is reviewing current curriculum documentation and lived classroom experiences to identify and address gaps and overlaps or discrepancies and redundancies in our curriculum. We're going to continue the development of our PBIS initiative. We still feel strongly that this belongs in both goals in the school improvement plan, because it impacts the classroom and instruction greatly, but also impacts the community of the school greatly as well. Also, we're going to be looking to develop a vision of the graduate subcommittee. That speaks directly to Strategic Plan Initiative 1.2. The end result of this will be multi-years away, but we'll be developing school-based, age-based, end-of-the-year expectations linked to the Abington High School vision of the graduate. Goal two, we'll be continuing to cultivate a safe, welcoming, and inclusive school, community that builds on existing strengths and increases students' social, emotional, and executive functioning skill level. And again, you'll see our, our advisory programming and wave PBIS in here. It's part of goal two, really looking to revisit the positive response we've had to our reward system portion of PBIS and continue to grow and enhance that. We're also looking to increase homeschool communication and develop some protocols within the school itself for that. This is a district-wide initiative through the Strategic Action Plan. It's Initiative 2.3. Currently, many AMS educators are using a variety of tools to communicate regularly with families. They're using Remind, they're using Wavelit, they're using Aspen Canvas, and others that they find that are free, that accomplish the job of getting the word out to families. But they're not using a consistent tool or a consistent time frame. So what we're looking to do with this particular action step is to identify a frequency, a method, and a purpose of communications, communications that are teacher-initiated and directed from a classroom and a grade level or team perspective. So what this doesn't mean is teachers won't be sending emails home to individual families and communicating through that. But we're looking to formalize our protocols for that one. We're also looking to increase awareness of opportunities for parents and community members to be involved in the Abington Middle School school-based events. This again speaks back to the Strategic Action Plan, it's Initiative 3.3. And what we're looking to do there is make sure people are aware of opportunities to participate in things such as field days, dances, extracurricular activities, field trips, classroom volunteering, even substitute teaching, if they would like. There's always a need and a welcome for that. And that is the proposed school improvement plan for 2025-26, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do you have any questions for Matt?
I have a comment more than anything else. When we hear from department heads at the high school, we hear a lot about expectations and making sure that there's consistent expectations across a department. As you think about the vision of the graduate and maybe for our eighth-grade students, it may be helpful for the administration, I guess, to understand what the expectations are for like late work delivery and things like that, to help students prepare for entering high school, as it seems as though the trend is a little bit more rigidity when it comes to missed work and expectations for effort put in and all that. You may be already having those conversations, but it seems like that's a theme in the high school right now that may help seventh and eighth-grade kids transition up to the high school.
Yep, that's a good point, Melanie. And one of the things that we'll be doing with this is involving the department heads directly in the discussions, because the department heads at the high school level still cover grades seven and eight. So it's a perfect kind of carryover there and maybe help, that process itself may help build more consistency of expectation between seven through 12.
Absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome.
Question? I, so you're looking at the continued use of iReady. Are you, what are the, what's the feedback right now from teachers? And are you reporting that information directly to the families as, have you gone through two cycles of iReady?
We've gone through two cycles, so those initial, the fall and the winter. So your, your second question, yes, they're posted directly to Aspen, and we send a letter home to families to say, your iReady report is available in Aspen, and we give the directions. It's the same as accessing a report card.
And that's the same K.
Correct, yep, K through six.
K through six.
K through six, yep. Our teachers are very adept at looking through data, because we hold so many data team meetings, particularly around MCAS and then throughout the year. iReady itself, we're still learning the intricacies of that level of data. What the teachers are focusing on using that for right now is intra-classroom groupings, instructional groupings within their own classrooms, and looking at what that data is telling them about what their students have learned and what they may need to revisit. Honestly, it's going to take us a couple of years to really effectively use that data the way iReady may be intended to use at the highest level.
So a follow-up, two points on that is, I'm just wondering if there's a trend where parents are getting iReady data that maybe is different than what, what levels they expect their child? Or, and/or do we have teachers who are looking at the results at a classroom level, and it's maybe not matching up with the grades that are happening? Are they at that level yet where they can use that data or no?
So they can view the data, and they can look at how the data compares to what they're seeing produced from students in the classroom, and it doesn't always match up. In particular, that the first administration didn't match up a lot, and there was some concern there. But we need to continue to push through with it and look at, and continue to look at it. I think as we continue to implement that program itself, hopefully that data will continue, begin to make more sense with us. That, that, I don't know if that answers your question, Heidi?
Yeah, no.
But there's definitely some discrepancy that we see. There's also some discrepancy we see with MCAS results.
Right.
And classroom grades for individual students.
And I'm just, I hope people are looking at this, for, these for what they are, their metrics. And one snapshot is not, it's just that, it's a snapshot, but when you put them all together, we should be giving families a, a pretty good idea of where their child really is academically.
A hundred percent, I agree completely. And when we talk about data with staff, we try and focus on two things. One, it's a snapshot. Any, any student could have a bad day. Any batter could hit a homerun or strikeout, right? But also, as a, as a teacher, you can't wear the data. You own it, but you can't wear it. If your MCAS results come back and they're not what you wanted them to be, the worst thing we can do as educators is put that on and wear it and say, what, what have I done? How could I have let this happen? It's really focusing on the use of that. What can we gain from that to learn about our instructional practice, our assessment practices, our curriculum, our groupings? And that's the focus of the work that we do with that.
Thank you.
Matt, I don't, I don't know if it even, what I have even applies directly to like, maybe could fit into goal two or something like that. But it goes back to something that I've had for a while, and it's, Melanie hit on eighth graders getting ready, like getting ready for high school. I do feel that when this building was built, that sometimes we lose that transition from sixth to seventh, because that is a big jump, a big change from having your class and somebody else to having every other class. When it was going from the Woodsdale to Frollo, it was almost a built-in transition that happened. Is there, are there things in place for, I don't know, and I don't even know if it's June of sixth grade or September of seventh grade or May or October, how it works, but to like support things in place for, as kids enter seventh grade and the change, and how it changed and things to be on the lookout for, and what's going to be different, like stuff like that?
Yeah, absolutely. There's people in our office that are, that are focused on that. We have a day for sixth graders to go upstairs. We vacate the seventh-grade classrooms, they go somewhere else, and the sixth graders go experience what it's like to walk through a seventh, seventh-grade day so that they're traveling from room to room, they're meeting with the teachers and seeing the expectations. And then you lose that ability in the fall, because they're already there.
Yeah.
Right? But we do have, our counseling staff visits classrooms and homerooms. We focus on it during advisory at the beginning. There's always going to be a little bit of a, a transition period between sixth and seventh, and you're absolutely correct. When they were in separate buildings on separate sides of town, we had evening meetings. We had locker day, when kids would go and do their lockers. A lot of that happens now in fifth grade. And the evening meetings, we still held them when we opened, and we found them, they weren't very well attended at all, which reduced their effectiveness. So we looked at what can we do individually in the daytime for students, rather than having them come into a building they already go to, go walk around a floor that they already go to for some specialist class and learn about things that they're already kind of part of.
And I can't speak for all the kids, I, I can speak for a sixth grader that lives in my house. And the idea, because I believe we've switched the seventh, eighth-grade open houses to being the same night that Monday before school starts, right? I think that's a big thing, honestly, for some of those seventh graders to be able to go up there and see it ahead of time and not say, my first day of school is the first, I know they may see it this year, right, but three months of summer and everything else. So I think, I applaud that change. I don't, I attended the seventh, eighth grade where it was going from class to class. I think this gives the kids, especially the seventh graders, the opportunity to feel more comfortable starting off their school year, the way it's now structured going forward.
Well, thank you. We looked at a couple data points for that. Attendance at the seventh and eighth-grade open houses was much lower than at the fifth and sixth-grade open houses. And also that if you, as a parent, were not at work in time to get there for the beginning, well, you're tardy for school, and you might have missed the first three periods, and you don't get to go to those classes. And we wanted to eliminate that part of it and make sure that we were, not only the things that you're mentioning, get those kids in and let them walk and see their classrooms, but giving a parent the ability to come in. They only have 45 minutes at the end, they can still come in and hit those classrooms and talk to those teachers.
Right, got it. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Abington Copes as well for just.
Yeah, an amazing opportunity for our kids, it really is.
And I was going to say, there's also professional development along with that whole Vive18.
You'll let me know, yeah.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Does anybody else have anything else for Mr. McCurton?
Mr. McCurton, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So moving on, as crazy as this seems, the final day of school for the school year is going to be Thursday, June 12, 2025, after we make a motion, because we didn't have any snow this year. We didn't have any snow on a school day anyway. Presidents say once we said it, we said it, forget it, right? So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to make Thursday, June 25, 2025, the final day of school for this school year, which will be a half-day for students.
I will make that motion.
Second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you say June 25th or June?
June 12th.
Okay, I thought you said.
June 12, 2025.
Okay.
Yeah. Are you good with that?
There won't be anyone.
Yes, absolutely.
Our next school meeting will be Tuesday, May 27, 2025, same time and place. time and place, the day after Memorial Day. Before I hit on some of the informational things, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Michelle to, to speak about something.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just have a quick item, and that is, I just wanted to wish Lynette McNeil, who is our human resources payroll data person in our office, the best of luck after nineteen years of service to the Abington Public Schools. She's moving on, and we wish her best, the best in her next professional endeavor. So thank you, Lynette.
Yes, echo from all of us. Thank you as well. In the informational items, I just want to hit on the first thing. Coach Paraxas, for those of you that don't know, set the school record for most career coaching wins in any sport on Patriots Day, April twenty-first. Abington High School varsity baseball coach Steve Paraxas is now the school's all-time wins leader for any coach in any sport at Abington High School, with the win over Cardinal Spelman on Monday, April twenty-first. It was Coach Paraxas' three hundred thirty-ninth career victory, and he passed former Abington High School baseball coach Tom Graham in the all-time wins column. Congratulations, Coach. Continued success on that. There's also an internet safety flyer as part of the package for anybody that wants to take a look. It looks like.
That was provided by the police department.
Okay, provided by the police department. So it looks like Wednesday, June fourth is the date, the information's in there for registration as needed. Some of the dates to remember, the middle school presents Little Mermaid. Their drama presentation's going to be Friday, May ninth at seven PM, and Saturday, May tenth at two PM in the auditorium. May, Thursday, May twenty-second, there's a slight date, date incorrect on here, is the senior reception receiving line at two oh one Glenett's Way at four forty-five PM, but earlier in the day, it's the seniors' last day of school. So they're done in like, what do you got left? Three weeks left of school. So congratulations to all the seniors. It'll be our last meeting before they're out of school. Congratulations, Anna. So is this your last, is this your last meeting then?
I was going to ask that, too.
Okay, okay.
We hope you do.
Yes, that's completely up to you. So I didn't think about the timing of all that. So if you don't, though, thank you very much for everything, and congratulations on graduation, which we'll see you at as well.
In the meantime, can we brag a little bit? Can you tell everyone where you're going to school?
I'm going to University of Vermont.
University of Vermont.
Oh, but there's more.
One.
Which college?
Oh, the honors.
So she'll be in the Patrick Leahy Honors College at UVM studying.
By honors.
So congratulations. So excited for you.
Somebody else is going to Vermont?
Yes.
Heidi's daughter's going to Vermont as well.
Yes.
So with that, Caroline, this is a, this will be a newer one. So by roll call vote in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A-three, for the purpose of conducting strategy session for negotiation with the Abington Education Association, Units A and B, and non-union personnel, since holding this discussion open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position and not to return to regular session. So we will, we will, what's the word I'm looking for? Why am I blanking?
Adjourn.
Adjourn at the end of executive session. We need a roll call vote to enter that, though, so everybody basically has to say yes or no to this, and I will start with yes to provide. So Pam?
Yes.
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
And Caroline?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great rest of your night, week, month.